Everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
With the additions? Everybody have anything they want to take now or any questions on it? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the agenda, always in favor sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
If both same side, motion passes. Number four, public forum. Number five, presentation. Tonight we have, uh...
Yeah, my mic on.
Tonight with us from School Perceptions, we have Darren Severs. Uh, he's zooming in. Um, back in, I believe it was January, the school board wanted to follow up with a survey of, of staff and parents from a survey we did a couple of years ago. So, ask Darren to present the findings and give you a little bit of insight on it. So Darren, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I appreciate you tolerating this very busy time period. We're getting a lot of these school board presentations and involving the multiple school districts in the same night, just on Cannon Falls. And on last Thursday, we were in New York City, so we're all over the country doing surveys. So, I am based out of suburban Milwaukee. Uh, I've worked for a school district for 27 years. Uh, and I worked for a district at Youthful Perceptions as well. Uh, my recent exit position, I'm former base at Lake City, Minnesota. So this, this is going to be one of the takeover Minnesota territory. So, um, tonight I'm going to be sharing with you your parent survey findings and your staff survey findings. And, um, I do want to clarify, you've done surveys in the past, a few years ago. We did with Kevin's guidance and my, my lead base. The last two years, we revised our surveys and trimmed and down 70 or 80 question down to 30, 35. It has made our response rate soar and we have hundreds and hundreds of districts buying a condensed survey. And so we went to the new survey because all the data compared to is very current. And they'll make a very nice baseline data for a year from now. If you want to maybe use more in under the direction of new leader, maybe want to set some improvement goals, we can measure how that's going one year from now, very current data post-COVID with our shorter and more efficient survey that has more clarity questions and gets better response rates. So, that being said, here's what you're getting here tonight. I'll give you a brief background of all the company. And then we're going to dive into each of your surveys, who responded, how the results were. And then, um, at the end of the results section, I'm going to summarize five great strengths, five areas that need most improvement. And then I'll take any questions. And we have a very full agenda and there's going to be a lot of data here. That's why I'm doing the highlight. At the end of each, the parents and staff surveys will settle down into the five high-scoring, five low-scoring areas, really give you a snapshot of how things went in pipe zone. So, our companies that exist for over 20 years, we've done over 10,000 staff, parent, student surveys. And we've helped over 900 districts with strategic planning and reference type of their school. This is our team, our owner, who's very the company at the far left, our research director, Rob, Kerry who helps us with some implementation. And I've customized surveys and acted as project manager for, for pipe zone. So when it came to the parent surveys, um, we had 108 respondents for a participation rate of 17%. Now, two things above the 17%, that's more than our company average on this same parent survey for other districts. Typically, we get about 30%, but with the company, um, anything north of 10% is very, very reliable. Because once you get down to 10%, the, the composition of answers evenly distributed amongst all the different opinions, whether it's a 10th, 20th, or 30th. So this is reliable data even at 17%. This is the distribution of buildings. 57% responses came from the high school, 34% the middle, 59 the elementary. Obviously, that's more than 100% and that's because of several of your parents and a bunch of child in multiple buildings. This is the grade level distribution. Everything from 7% response rate kindergarten to 19% for your secondary and your junior. And then, one or more of the founding services received. This allows us to study, um, different areas. For example, if you had concerns about how special education was going, we could look at just the answers of just the parents who have children in special education. Um, if you have gifted and talented concerns, we could look at just the responses of those who have children in the gifted and talented program and so on, ELO, any of the subcategories. Here's the racial distribution. And the indexes for parents. We asked them to answer the questions we asked them on a scale of one to five. Five being strongly agree, one being strongly disagree. If they weren't sure, we did give them the, the natural, um, um, inclinations to just say not sure. If they agree, we don't allow it three. The true mean is three. If they don't, no. Or go to five, we don't allow them to water down the results. We just, we let them answer that and it's zero points. We only want to wait for the people that have an opinion one way or the other. And each of the questions on the survey, as I said, there were roughly 35. They fed into one of five areas, being informed, being included, their child's educational experience as far as achieving excellence, being atmosphere in school, and whether they're accepted and respected and supported in school. So the column says current score are the average scores in that index for pipe zone. The far right column is the average score for the hundreds of other districts that have also conducted the same survey. There are above your size, above your socioeconomic standing, and staff to student ratio. You may wonder, well, how many is that? Well, it's several hundred, because 80% of districts in America are 2,000 students or less. So if you think right around 1,000, 80 to 1,100 students, there are a lot of districts that are your stuff. In fact, they just hung up with Cannon Falls at 6:00 and they're exactly 1100 students. So they're going to bear wanting to compare. So we're going to dive into the individual question book so you can take a deeper look question by question. Again, they answered five, four, two, or one, three being the true middle point. So we love to see as many scores above three as possible. So, under leadership communication, the school board is doing what it takes to make our districts successful. 59% gave for four or five, for an average score of 3.13. And then compared to other districts who asked that same question, their average score was 3.64. So we look south of the average. District administration is doing what it takes to make our districts successful. 58% for five, average score of 3.11. If compares the average score relative to 3.2. And that is the district headed in the right direction. Again, the student score 56%, 3.06, 3.61. Now that's how I've reported all the findings of the night in the parent survey and the staff's survey. But at the end, as I said, we'll have two yellow slides where we'll show you showcase the five high-scoring areas, the areas of strength, and the five over-scoring areas, areas that you may want to consider as, as areas of weakness. Overall, public rate communications from the school. Communication is an area that has been scoring very poorly post-COVID. Families got so used in daily emails on traction rates and daily emails about quarantine rates and contact rates. Uh, right now, 50% of parents give you a good or a great score under the average. How would you like to receive information? So we asked them, how's it going? The next question, how would you like to hear from the school? No surprise in my school, emails came on top, followed by automated calls and texts. And then, actually, one of the highest scoring areas, um, this spring, we did roughly 16 research projects in different districts, meetings with teachers and administrators, one of the highest scoring areas, pipe zone. And that was a bit of an outlier. Most times, it was the website and Facebook and all the other tech tools that they wanted to hear from. But your, your community, your parents, they would like to meet with this, they would like to meet with this kid. And then so on down the list. It's also helpful maybe where not to spend as much time. Nobody is really paying attention to your Twitter account or some topics on the media topic. And we wish more would pay attention to the school board meetings, although we know that you want to pull out. But it does look like they're paying real attention to what's happening at the port lot at 6%. School experience. Now, my child feels safe at school. Very nice to see. 86% gave for four or five, is student safe, per average score of 3.87. While as I compared on the districts, other districts average is 4.16. And we got to move through these fairly quickly and then summarize the strengths with a high five, a low five. At least once, full staff members have come for contacting, but I'm not here concerned. I feel welcome with my child at school, all very favorable scores. I'm satisfied with how much my child learned this year, very nice to see. I know how to support my child learning. This has definitely been something we take for granted post-COVID because so many teaching techniques changed when we had that technology phase. Seems like excellent parents feel like they're keeping up. Overall, my child is able to handle the emotional challenges at school. This has been very for lots of districts are scoring in the whole three scores south of three. Seems as though pipe zone has the emotional supports in place necessary to support kids. If my child breaks a rule at school, they're treated fairly. Most things, my child enjoys going to school. The school teaches the materials reflect my family's culture and racial background. Schools staff treat my child with deep respect. My child gets help when they need it. School facilities are clean and well-kept. Notice, that is an area many districts are doubling that post-COVID because the average is a 4.29. Even though you're at a 3.63, there's quite a gap there because that's an area lots of districts are really doubling down with their cleaning protocols. I'm updated on my child's duty at school. The school has high expectations for my child. School communication is timely and transparent. That's where we're getting into an area where little wide gap compared to the average. And a little more percent green strongly. Have opportunities to provide feedback to school, the school and teachers. School provides opportunities for parental involvement. There's a healthy culture at our school. And then, the lowest scoring area was, I'm satisfied with our school's efforts to address bullying. Almost a full point overall compared to them. We did ask a question, for all the homework my child is asking for things just under 80%, which is nice to see. That's where, where many of our more successful districts have landed, right on 80%. Because it's very hard to confuse everybody on the homework. Some parents say too much, you can see some say too little, some don't know. Does your child participate in the full group activity at school? 71% for yes, nice to see the type of space friends. We see that every student goes to school to learn. Some go to school to compete and that learning is just a byproduct of being qualified, connected, sport, and club. And we asked a question, does your child access the online internet? Not something we can take for granted. We have some North Dakota accounts and some Northern Wisconsin accounts where that is more around 60%. So teachers have to be very careful about how much stays high online for homework because the kids can't necessarily help not having internet at home. And then finally, a question we asked the parents on a scale of zero to 10. How likely would you be to recommend this school, this school district to a parent or family? What I would say is hurting your adversary, their average score is a 5.83 compared to comparison, which is 7.44. You have a lot, the largest I've seen all spring across our 60 elements we've conducted this spring in the neutral range. They're not critical to you, but they're also not, not celebrating. They're kind of right a little uncertain, which is part of the reason we take away that three of those other questions. Because we want people to give us an opinion in what way we are. Human nature is the lane break at finish line. So then, by summary, top five scores were in safety, connection with staff, feeling welcome, how much their child is learning, and feeling able to support their parent. So learning part of things and the connection to school. And safety were strength. The areas that scored at the bottom. Communication. Communication and feedback side by side. Parental involvement. School culture and tied very closely to school culture bullying, which impacts school. So this was by a attempt to summarize for you. Because you don't do a survey like this just to look for areas that are low-scoring. You also want to celebrate and protect the areas that are strength. You've got some great things going here. And some other areas that would be more discussion with this yearly. So I know you're going some, some transition at the district leader role. By all means, um, these are your reports. I sent those to Kevin and anything I can do to support getting your reduced burden of speed, please don't be shy. I will be reaching out to him, make sure there's a seamless transition to do this. Again, that's great to see we've been able to needle on some of these areas that need some attention. So then, questions or comments about this and our parent survey from homework. No? Okay, then I'll move into staff survey. 97 respondents from the staff for a participation rate just under 50%. Typically, we get about 65 to 70% participation rate from the staff. So again, my parents a little bit less than we normally see, but still very, very likely reliable plan. Uh, we took maybe improvement goals based off this on the date, 97, this is a nice note. This is the distribution. 55% for the elementary, 29% high school, 10% middle school. What best describes the position? Nice throw up from the two classroom teachers. 57%. Ed specials were 15%, parent professionals 19%, and then 6% for support positions. How many years have you worked for the district? One-third, then they're 10 years or more, which is nice, nice to see that, that employee retention. Um, we've been doing more staff surveys this spring than any other tool within our 27 different survey products. And that's because districts are recognizing it's very, very, um, getting very much more challenging to retain progressive points and the tools are strengthening for replacements. So they're working very hard to keep the people they've got. The indexes, just like the parents, five, four, two, or one for a true median of three. The indexes, the staff were asked to answer questions within were academics, engagement, feeling valued and heard, feeling supported, their student experience through the teacher, and the staff experience through their own. See your average scores at pipe zone? And then the compares in the average scores on the summary of that. And then, just like the parent results. Individual questions will be summarized here and then I'll do the top five and lowest five. Very good technology score, well above the compare standard. They have the technology they need to do the job. And they're feeling very safe. One area that is particularly worth celebrating in pipe zone, I have the access to the technology support there. Many districts are scoring just fine if I have the technology to do my job well. But part of all that is the technology supported to do the job well. Meaning districts have a lot of kinds of devices, but they don't have people to help the staff make a run. And so that's frustrating staff. That clearly is not the case at pipe zone because your score is on the bottom. I have healthy working relationship with my coworkers, nice to see. Most days I'm on the floor going over, above the compare standard. I have the material supplies I need to do my job well. They're feeling like they have the stuff to teach the kid well. They love work. I'm asked the newest reason, you're well above the national average. 3.86 compared to the average giving 3.56. Not something that should be taken for granted because workload, um, has been something I've been recording on a lot for districts or well above that 3.56. And I feel comfortable sharing my concerns with my supervisor, my administrator, that employee supervisor communication piece. How about their working background? Our staff does a good job educating our students. In the last year, we received useful feedback, taught improvement. Again, well above the average. All those United Way students with the pencils are running around in the way, their value, again, with feedback on their work. Had opportunities for training and professional development, improvement, those in-service days, those days before the school here kicks off at the end of the school year. Their value. All students at our school respecting for their values and beliefs, gift them bits. Staff can put his value, just above right after the comparison average. So that's why that comparison average kind of, um, is helpful. Because if you just saw 63% agree or strongly agree with staff in or be, be done, well, in isolation, that might jump on this concern. Would that happen right at the national act? It's not just an area that tends to score lower along the grade practice, along with discipline. We'll get to those in a bit. Information important, you shared with me in a timely and effective manner. And here's where I just need to include this. Our staff handles discipline in a consistent manner. Only 48% gave a score of four or five for an average of 2.89. The average score across the nation of the districts like pipe zone, 2.98. So, we're there discussion, but far from the emergency. Our school's discipline practice, how is it perfect? These tend to go hand to hand. 45% 2.8 compared to the average score of 2.85. And then, how, how are they filled off the supports in school? Our school supports students from diverse backgrounds. Nice scores above the profit. Our school has a process to ensure every student has a connection with at least one adult. Above the, the compare standard. All students at our school are given a lot of opportunities to learn, experience, and success. Very favorable. I feel supported by the supervisor administrator when I'm considering. And as we look at these, then next year, we ask this question again, we'll see which have grown, which have maybe subsided, um, based on whatever, um, the group decided they want to focus on for improvement. I'm training and supporting work with students of different backgrounds. More important than ever, kids are coming to school with more needs than ever before, way back to compare standard. The socially, emotionally, these small students are being met. Well above the compare standard. And they have a time when many, many, um, school districts are having a tough crisis in their schools. It seems well, you guys and the staff, you're giving students the support they need. Our parents of the community support the district. They feel well compared to them. The district is heading in the right direction. Very similar, they feel well compared to them. District administration, doing what it takes to make our districts successful. These three pattern type clusters, similar pattern. I recognize my, do a good job. The school board is doing what it takes to make our districts successful. And as I did to before, district pay practices are fair. Only 48% for five, per average of 2.84. But again, compare standard to other districts, 3.13. Seems to be an area where lots of people are, are not quite satisfied. The district seeks input from all the staff members. And how about equitable opportunities for students? Are there gent, gent or impact their opportunities? No. What about special education and disabilities? No. Academic background? Pipe zone accounts for that. Four children have just equal opportunities to be successful as well. Different racial backgrounds? And different cultural backgrounds? All nice to see. And then, on a scale of zero to 10, how likely would you be to recommend the district as a placement point? Your average score is 6.32. The comparisons for other districts, 6.78. Because you have the 29%. And again, what's the comparison though? The largest area is that neutral, they're coming five and X. That's very unusual for, for this question that we ask of, of these surveys. So, to summarize, top five areas, technology, safety, technological support, collegial relation. And just the overall job they, they feel they're doing on behalf of kids. They're proud of the job they're doing and they feel supported and have the tech tools to do that job. Enjoy working for one another. Client scores, that's nice to see. Now, the areas that are in front more in scoring. School board, student discipline, pay practices. Getting important throughout, throughout group of staff members. Now, a survey like this can change that because particularly if you report the findings back to them and they see that they're being heard. And that our school's discipline practices are positive. So discipline, pay practices, and get one. Any questions or comments on the staff?
Is there a way that you can see like which group of people, whether it be the high school or the middle school or the elementary are, are, you know, stating that that's more of a problem or less of a problem amongst their?
You bet, you bet again. Um, just a matter of, I would really like to follow up on this. I know as, as we talked about before, I'm just on transition there. Um, I, our results are getting location in our servers where you have high access and report to all the results. And it's very, very, I've only been at the company here, it's one of the first things I learned. It's very easy. You can go into these reports and there's a button that says this activate. You click on the group, the building, and then you hit view results. And it'll show you all responses just based on that building. Or you can click on a job category. Parent professionals, only. Teachers, only. You could do it the data line app. So by all means, that's why we ask those questions, is so we can study and, and dive more deeply into a building, into a department, or a job category. Um, myself, I had in my, in suburban Milwaukee of just a couple of years ago. I had pay practice was, was scoring where I scored very poorly. Turned out it wasn't a teacher, it was off, their score was off the charts. It was a support staff. As I was making budgetary decisions, I was, I had a blind spot as I was budgeting. And I wasn't keeping the raises up to speed regionally for support staff and parent professional life was a teacher. So we dealt it out then. And a year later, yeah, much better scores because that was a problem. And given that, um, problem, I'd be glad to do for you, just a matter of what questions you would like to be the problem. If that's something you want to charge the new superintendent with and have him reach out to me, by all means, let it write the new. We don't recommend districts do this survey more than once a year. I have nine months and power on strings, the one in whatever six months. Don't feel like building for a survey more than once a year because you don't have time to, to move the needle. When honestly, summer's the time to plan for a grand opening starting the year. And then it takes time for changes to take place. Spring is a really good time to measure how we've been doing on our improvement goals. But as a matter of, what areas do you want to improve on as a board, as a district leadership group? You just have to let me know, I'll be with that. You just have to let me know, I'll deal with that as the strategies split. Okay, any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, last week's um Kevin, if there's anything that comes up or if it's a situation where you wanted to give up. Um, you wanted to give the list of the school board members. And then emails. Um, I'd give any of the board members that wanted access to our server and they looked at the results themselves, that school. That transition really bad book of work we'd like to see from school perceptions, this door data. And you can um go right, you'll have a place right in our server, they'll get the the data as much as you'd like. If anybody struggles, I can give you a tutorial over the full arm. So whatever I can do, okay?
Well, let's check in tomorrow and uh I'll get information to you.
Yeah, give me a shout out Jeff or Kevin, Kevin, whatever of works best for you.
Okay.
Um, is that a little so busy time, Chris? Just let me know.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, consent agenda. Everyone had a chance to look over the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of them.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Seven financials. Seven point one, review of budget year to date.
Hey, um, budget year to date, we're currently at eighty-five percent, which is where we're supposed to be last year at this time, we're at eighty-six percent, so. Looks like we're on target to where we're supposed to be.
And and we have uh. Normally you'd think this is our, the end of our fiscal year, but we still have some summer checks.
We have all the teacher payoffs yet, so we still have.
Next month is kind of.
July and August payoffs for teachers, July and August, September payoffs for paraprofessionals, and we just will still have bills coming in through September.
For this fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay, seven point two, approved treasurer's report for May twenty twenty-three.
Current cash balance with all the funds is currently at ten million dollars. It's nice to be looked at the certificates of deposit, it's nice to see um. Interest rates like over four percent. Instead of point oh six, I don't know if that was ever that, but I'm sure that's fantastic.
Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report for May twenty twenty-three?
Some of them.
I have a motion and a second to prove that to approve the treasurer's report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Seven point three, approve regular bills for June twenty twenty-three. Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the bills, the regular bills for June twenty twenty-three?
Some of them. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bills for June twenty twenty-three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Seven point four, approve high school activity bills for June twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions on the high school activity bills? Can I get a motion to approve the high school activity bills for June twenty twenty-three?
Some of them. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the high school activity bills for June twenty twenty-three. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Eight, board forum information, eight point one, board reports and updates. We had a, we had a finance committee meeting, went over the budget, which is gonna come up here. In the agenda tonight. That went well.
Yeah.
Um, we're a good, I mean, I feel we're in a good spot. Um.
Negotiations.
Yeah, negotiations. Yeah, we met with uh Ludoff Bussing and um that went well. Um, we. Came to an agreement and. Yeah. Pretty. Went really well.
Yep.
What else have we got?
We have the, we have the work sessions, but we've got.
We got that on the agenda.
I haven't done any other thing meetings. Yep, I think so.
That was easy.
There you go.
Number nine, administrators' report, nine point one, superintendent's board report.
Um, this is my final report, so I just wanted to say how much I've appreciated uh Pipestone communities. Pipestone area schools, communities, uh the people, the school board members, all of them that I've worked with have been. Um, it's been a really good seven years and I've appreciated all of you and. Uh, and our staff and our administrators and students and community members in general, it's. It's been a really good seven years of growing and uh. We gotta finish this meeting. So I I don't need to, but I thank you to everyone, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
All right, nine point two, principals' board report.
Good evening. Um, kind of the one big thing to kind of report on is we have summer school, it's in full swing right now, we're in our second week, it started last week on Tuesday. Um, going for eight days. Uh, we are currently doing reading, we have approximately ninety students and about thirteen teachers. We do have three paras that are supporting with our services that we have and. Um, I love walking around the kids, the the feel of summer school is awesome, they're excited to be here, they're having fun, they're learning. It's it's a cool environment and and it's just awesome. So that's kind of the big thing that we have going on in June and July will be math, kind of towards the middle of of July, that's kind of going on. Questions?
Nine point three, director of C T L and community education board report.
Excellent. Well, first of all, um, we do have our fast data, which, is it okay if I switch it over? Have to get on the right presentation. Here we go. All right. So we're taking a look at our fast data by building by screener. Um. We look here, our early reading is um, should be kindergarten uh and grades one, kindergarten and grade one, it should say. Um, you're seeing growth overall, so it's the fall, the winter and the spring by our columns. Um, in the fall, we started with um sixty-two percent who are at low risk, that's what we're going for. We ended the school year with seventy-three percent at low risk, so those are all, it's good growth to be having. Um, our A reading in grades two through five, um, there's a little bit of growth. Um, if we look at the blue, that's the college pathway and the red is the low risk. So when you put those two together, you do see um a some growth over time, so um. Reading there is moving forward. Um, oop, going around the direction, sorry. C B M reading is a more specific screener. And um across the board, again, the college pathway is the blue and the low risk is the red. And um we started off the school year with a lot of kids at low risk. And by the end, um, we had a few more in college pathway than at um low risk. And notice I'm focusing on our positives, um, because that's what we can continue to celebrate. Um, our fourth and fifth graders take a screener called auto reading. And over the school year, they have grown significantly from fifty-nine percent at low risk to sixty-eight percent at low risk. And then if we shift over to early math, um, early math is grades K one, um, they started out the year pretty strong. They grew to seventy-nine percent at low risk um in the winter and then in the spring came down to seventy-three percent low risk. A math for grades two through five, again, here, the blue is college pathway and the red is low risk. Um, if we look here, we kind of stayed this about the same throughout the whole school year, we had a little bit higher score in the winter with forty percent. Of our students at low risk and twenty-five percent at college pathway. We look at our um automaticity, this is like can you sm- how fast can you solve math problems, your fluency essentially in math. Um, we started off with um being pretty, pretty high and um having uh ended with forty-two percent at some risk. And forty-one percent at low risk. And then um grades three through five, the same type of automaticity. Um, we started as we ended. We had fifty-four percent at low risk in the fall and we ended with fifty-four percent at low risk in the spring as well. If we move to the middle school, A reading, um, here, the blue is college pathway and the red is low risk. We started out greater than we ended our school year in our middle school level for reading. Um, if you just even look at the low risk, we were at forty percent low risk in the fall and we ended our spring with thirty-one percent low risk.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
When, what time of the year were the spring tests given?
They were.
May?
Yep, they were after the third week in May. Um, second and after M C A testing, so like May sixteenth through May twenty-ninth in there. Yep. So.
Kids already start to check out.
Yeah, so I was thinking to it, they're done. You know, how how can we keep going until the end? How can we teach and keep learning until the end? Um, C B M reading English was only given in the fall this year at the middle school, um, so we do not have a comparison at the spring. Auto reading, they stayed uh relatively the same, they were at sixty-four percent in the fall, sixty-four percent in the the winter at low risk. And at sixty-one percent at low risk in the spring. A math, um, you can see the the same idea with A math as A reading, they started off the fall strong. Um, the spring they, the winter, excuse me, they dropped and the the spring they dropped even more.
So would the level of questions be similar?
Yep, they're, it's, yep.
If they're identical test?
They're not identical questions, but they're assessing the similar.
At the same level?
At the same level, yep.
So level doesn't increase as they're going through the school year?
It it will increase essentially based upon their, what their state, how well they should be growing and how much they should be growing over time. But it's, the test is not relatively different over time, it's not the same exact questions, but the same concepts are being assessed.
Okay.
Um, if we go to their automaticity, they they started off at sixty-seven percent at low risk and then the winter and spring, they're at fifty-five percent low risk. Um, we started giving this assessment in the high school as well, um, we started following the eighth graders who who took it last in the middle school. So then we kept them as ninth graders, so now those first eighth graders are now tenth graders so that the high school staff have some data to look at. Um. Mr. Strasser wanted it only given twice a year and he wanted it given in the fall and the spring, so that's what we did this year. Um, they started off in the fall with this, the blue is college pathway and the red is low risk. And um they had more students in the low risk area in the spring, so they had forty-five percent in the low risk and nineteen percent in the college pathway. Um, auto reading here, they started off with eighty-three percent low risk, they went down just a couple ticks to seventy-eight percent in the spring. And then A math, they um had a few, had twenty-seven percent at college pathway in the fall, went down to fifteen percent in the spring. Um, but their low risk grew about that same amount. And then automaticity here, um, for math, uh, they were rocking it in the fall with eighty-six percent at low risk. And in the spring, seventy-two percent were low risk. Um, and I can stop there, it's just if you want to know more about the screeners, there's a slide, so you have that information. Um, the rest of my update is uh based upon community ed, um. We have um. Almost doubled our participation rates from winter. Um, right now we have about forty-six percent or forty-six uh individuals who have already participated in activities. That had to be registered for, so that's really awesome. Um, we're looking forward to having a few more things in July and of course cribbage club, if you want to play cribbage on a Wednesday, there are a couple more times to play. So. Questions?
Do you know often you're gonna offer the defensive driving course?
Um, the, it has been offered, but no one has signed up, so they don't um come down if no one has signed up for it.
So you'll offer it as much as?
I will offer it as many times as the gentleman from St. Cloud calls to say, here are the dates and I post them and no one signs up. So.
On the fast testing, do we pick the times that we give the test?
We follow, we can and we tend to follow, um, our reading corps. Has testing windows and that's essentially in the elementary why we give the fast bridge assessment. And so we we stick with their windows so that we are use, giving them the data to use for their progress monitoring as well as our own.
I just think it'd be interesting if that spring test was would be given like in April.
Before M C As?
Before M C As and before it gets nice out and.
How would you, how would you then use that data right before the M C A tests to make any changes in instruction?
I I think, I don't know, I think at least this is me speaking out loud, I think um thinking out loud. I I I think what I saw was. Kids checking out.
Do you understand why we give this assessment?
No.
So it's not just to show growth.
Yeah.
But it's also for teachers to make changes in their instruction.
Okay.
So when you are, especially the the fall assessment and the winter assessment are your most important. So that teachers can make, okay, I now know a little bit more about these kids, let's adjust what we need to be doing, whether that be. Let's get that kid into title, let's see if that kid needs some further assessment and monitoring. Okay, these kids need more help in this aspect of math or this aspect of reading, it's all, it's, this is a formative assessment. And formative assessments formulate what you should be working on in the classroom. So we're the only ones who see this data. Um, we have data meetings with the elementary staff immediately following, um, I've been asked to work with them on that. Talk through what are our needs, what needs to happen, so it's not like, I think. You know, some schools only give it twice a year, they only give it in the fall and the winter, if that's something that we would rather go to, I'm all for that. Um, we do use that data to make instructional decisions about who who's most beneficial or who's gonna most benefit from summer school. Who, you know, that's one of the pieces of data that are used to make that decision. Um, so it's really used to help formulate and and guide our instructional practices rather than just say, hey, yay, we have a lot of kids who are being proficient. So.
Anything else from Al?
Good job in the community education, that's awesome.
Thank you.
I like to see people starting to use some of those classes, that's cool.
Yeah.
And I just think the more and more people do it, the more the.
Word of mouth is trying to get out.
That's exactly it. It's good.
Number ten, discussion items.
You've got before you the first reading of our handbooks for preschool, elementary, middle school and high school. Um, so I think they've updated them, I don't know if there's any changes that take place here in July, but um I believe they're. We look at them and if there's questions on them. I don't know if there's any changes that take place here in July, but I believe they're, we look at them and if there's questions on them, you can raise those. Typically, they need to be, start getting sent out in August. So we don't want to be having questions or something on the handbook in August. So we're trying to be June, July. If there are questions or things that you want to know in there. So it's out there for review. Next month, if everything's okay, you approve and they're ready to go for the school year.
Okay, so this requires no action.
Nope.
So ten point six, bond project.
We had our work session here on June twentieth, so about a week ago, Tuesday.
Yeah.
We met, had a work session and kind of went through all of the different options that we have. So the idea was is to try to come to a decision as to what projects we want to move forward with. Discussion.
Well, I think there's some projects that I'm not, I mean, I don't know if we're ready. I guess I don't know, I don't want to push through on some of these projects if we're not for sure what we're doing with the project. Like the daycare, I still feel like we need to do that or we need to look into options, but I don't know if where we looked at it is going to be the right place for it. You know, so I mean, I think we need, I don't want to spend money on things and not have a clear view of what it's going to look like in the end.
Okay.
That's just my thoughts.
I agree with you, yeah.
I agree too.
Yeah.
We need to do it.
Do it right, yeah, we need to do it right.
We don't have enough information.
Well, and I don't know if it's the right part of the building. I mean, yeah.
Need to be putting cars on horses.
Other project discussion?
The egg stuff in my books, we need to do it. We need to figure out what to do with that big open space in there.
I would agree.
It's a wasted space right now, we need to figure out how we can. We have a new principal, we have to get he or she, we have to figure out how we can utilize this space. Use it for some job work, classroom work.
I agree.
Do a better job in the greenhouse side of it, if that's what. The whole industrial area needs to be.
Yeah.
It's good money spent.
It is.
But we've got to figure out how we're going to do it.
Right. And how to get the most space.
Facts too, or?
Usable space.
I'm fine with the facts, it's the.
Industrial tech greenhouse expansion, this is what you're addressing?
Yeah, I think we just need more, we need to look into that more as far as, you know, how we can use that, utilize that space and, because to me, it's just waste. I agree, it's wasted space.
Yeah, I think, you know, how Carl Anderson left it at the work session. You know, this would be approving, you know, certain projects, but the design and, you know, because he, they're just given a dollar amount for a square footage worth of work.
Right.
You know, that's how their, how their bids work. You know, and, and how we design it or, or what we do with it, I mean, that'll come, that'll come next phase, I think. But I agree, you know, even, even from talking to staff and talking to, you know, Cory, that open space down there has never really been utilized well.
Well, I, the way I understood it did when we had computers. When it was a computer lab.
But the way it is today.
But now, no, no. But I mean, when it was first built, I think that it was built for a purpose of computer labs. And then over the years, everybody's got laptops, so it's not usable space.
I would agree, that was what it was more of.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to misconstrue that it was never used.
Well, and the other thing is, we're going to have another ag teacher coming in this fall, so, you know, more, more classroom.
Wasn't there a discussion on trying to keep them close together?
Yeah, they should.
You don't want one at the opposite ends of the building.
Well, they should all be done in the same, I mean, to me, they use, I would think they use a lot of the same equipment.
Right.
Right.
I would encourage that too.
So, so then where are we at with these projects? The daycare kind of on hold?
I totally agree.
So, so that was a question I had, what happens with this if you put it on hold? The funding is still accessible or do you?
I don't think so.
We lose it?
Well.
We don't have, you don't have so much funding and you only have, you know, it's. I view that as you're looking for other alternatives. You'll, you'll look into other ways to do the daycare.
Okay. And we can do that down.
Lease levied space for preschool, you know, you can look at other types of areas and things.
So don't let that affect.
Or find a partner.
No.
Pursue other avenues. I think you, you do believe it's important, it's just with this project, it doesn't really fit. You don't like where.
Yeah.
Don't like the location.
Over here. Yep. So that means that you're just putting this on hold and we'll find other ways.
So the concession building, I believe that was out when we talked at the work session.
Yeah, I know, I'm like, no.
You know, just trying, just kind of reading the room from the work session, the, the press boxes too.
Yep.
Kind of a no-go.
Well, some of that stuff, I feel like we could, like we talked about, we could do it a lot cheaper if we did it locally and we could do it as a, you know, like in the budget. We could budget some of that in.
Right, right, yeah, we've done that.
Yeah.
Those type of projects in the past. So turf, track, backs, industrial arts move and the ag are still on the table. Guess I have some questions on the turf. Did we ever check into what it was going to take to maintain that year to year? I mean, we're looking at that equipment to do it or rent it or?
Zoller said that RTR got the equipment with the project. So they did some of the stuff, but they still bring in someone, I think, every year. Costs on that wasn't too significant.
Well, they didn't get the equipment, did they?
Yeah, they actually got some equipment to, to do some of the stirring. It came with the field, so I don't know where that's added in this piece of it. But I know when we look at, when you, when you talk about, you know, the mowing, the fertilizer, the watering, the, you know, all the maintenance that goes in. Over a twelve-year period, it's basically cost control zone.
It is, okay, it's a wash, okay.
It is, over time. Because you have those yearly things with grass where turf is kind of all done.
The only hidden cost would be in ten years when you've got to replace it.
Well, that's where it is and that's where you have to have that set in.
It's a wash outside of that.
Yep. They have yearly costs of fifty thousand, forty thousand over twelve years, that's, that's your half million, four hundred thousand that you need to probably put into it. Like the resurface of the track and that type of stuff.
You need to put it on the same thing as the track does.
So.
Is that on a ten-year thing?
Can be done on LTFM, so you can put that in your LTFM ten-year plan and, and monitor that and you should be able to.
Resurfacing of the tennis court.
That's another, yeah, so over, and resurfacing of the track, you're going to have to redo that again. You know, it's just timing all those, you don't want them all happening at the same time. You won't have enough LTFM for that, but you can do a tennis court one year, you can do a surface, track surface another, the next year you can do.
But I guess I would encourage, if we go through with that, to get that on a plan so everything is, is not on the same year as to spread your inputs off.
Yeah, and Kevin's done a good job of setting that up.
Yep.
I don't know, you're what, ten years, fifteen years out with the maintenance plan?
Ten, yeah. Gets foolish when I did the fifty, I'm like, what am I doing?
Can I ask a question? Why doesn't little A and little B down under number eight equal number six? Okay, so we're looking at number six.
We took some things out, we took the press box and the storage out. Those are numbers that you don't see, those are Carl Anderson numbers and so they don't, they're not the same. Good catch, Jackie. I'm not making numbers up, Jack.
I agree.
You're good with numbers, aren't you, Jackie?
He used to tell me, I found some numbers today and I'm like, no, 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 no.
So I, I mean, I think, I think we're to a point, I mean, if we're good with, if we're good with the projects we've identified that we want to move forward with. We need to, we need to make motion, we need to get it approved tonight. And then the gentleman in the back's going to talk to us next about, so financially, how we, how we get it all done.
Well, I was going to say, but I think.
But we can't, but we can't, we, we can't have him come up until we know the number, until we know what we're going to approve.
Well, I think we need to make sure that we're, because right now, if you add up all those, we're at three point four million.
Yes.
That's without the daycare.
We got about two point nine.
Right. So, I mean, that's something to think about when we're, I mean, we have to go out and find places for this money to come from. It's not just here.
Right, right, we discussed that at the work session.
Right.
We have a few different avenues.
Right, but if we want to go down, I mean, I think we need to be thinking about that if we want to go down those or if we want to. You know. Care it down or what we want to do with that too.
So we're going to come up with a half million dollars, some, some, I think?
Correct.
Does that have the one hundred and ten thousand for the draft and then the school for three twenty?
So we, we did the, the fax stream?
Yeah, it took, it took the budgeted.
Well, that's why I want to make sure I'm right too, the number four.
Yep.
Number five.
Yep.
And then number six, I used the one point eight million and the three hundred and forty, forty thousand.
Okay, that's the difference. That's the difference versus yours then.
Okay, because that took out the press boxes and the storage.
So yes, I, that's why mine was higher.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
So three point three, almost.
Three point two eight seven five two four.
Four hundred thousand. So, so my math was right?
Yeah, it was right, good job, Kevin.
And I think dollars are what we can.
I didn't see that either, well, we just want to make.
A lengthy question, where are we coming up with more of that?
Right.
Well, you asked and, and there was lease levy was an option. But that would, you would have to raise taxes on that, does not qualify for egg to school. But it is, it was an option that you could do. You could also do a capital bond project, taking funds from our capital outlay that we annually levy. We already levy these dollars, so it's not a tax increase. You're just taking some of these dollars and putting it into a ten-year bond, so you're getting some, a bigger amount of dollars. So you could get half a million if you wanted. Steve will talk with you about how that qualifies actually for egg to school tax credit. So it actually is a tax reduction. If you were to do it that way, because if not, right now, it doesn't qualify for egg to school, but if you put it into that bond, there would be some and it's actually lowers the, the tax impact. So those were the two options that you had.
What are you giving up by using that though?
Well, we currently get about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital outlay. So if you take forty to sixty thousand or seventy thousand of that.
Oh, that was the one.
You're tying that up for a few years. And, you know, that's again where, that's where we get our curriculum, we do our summer projects, if there's equipment needs and, you know.
You're sort of changing yourself.
Well, I wouldn't, most certainly wouldn't want to take half of it, but I think if you take a chunk and try to do half a million, you can probably finance and swing it that way pretty reasonably. And if anything were, elsewhere to seriously come up, you could find other funds to cover projects if it were an emergency or something. I think you're, like I said, we do this with some of these projects, so it's just a way to, to handle that. But that's where, if, if you decide, then there are options for you to, to look at to get those other funds.
I just don't like digging ourselves into a hole either. You know, you just never know what's going to come up and, I don't know. I like to spend money that I have. I mean that it.
I think you want to be wise with it.
That's what I mean, I like to spend the money we have here.
Oh, not anymore than that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I, I don't like, I myself.
Right. When you're doing a house project at your house, you don't.
I don't go.
You don't go above and beyond.
I, but.
I get you. So this capital facility bond, you could take like fifty thousand out for ten years, right? And that's how you would get your half million?
Yep.
No tax increase?
No, because you're already, you already levy those dollars, so. And like I said, it then calls for it's for eggs, egg to school, so there's the, it's about fifty percent tax, the state picks up the cost of that, so it's actually a.
But you, it's not like them dollars come from something else, so you're giving up that a little bit.
Right, because you, you use that whole two fifty every year?
Well, it's always been used, I mean, we're doing, we're doing, we've done parking lots, we've done lights.
Did fences, you've done, you know, upgraded fences out there.
So then instead of the two fifty, you're down to two hundred right away?
Right. We prioritize curriculum and, you know, materials that are in the classrooms. I mean, we also get a band instrument, there's microschoops.
So, so what would happen if you get creative and, and of the fifty, you take twenty-five out of lease levy? And then you take the other twenty-five out of this? You're going to get some savings with that offset that twenty-five that you're, through that lease levy?
He says no.
No, you can only levy for it.
So here's a question I have, can we ask this thing, can we change it after we've listened to him? Can we change, this can all change, right? We're just deciding.
I think you can amend what you want to do.
Okay.
Right, why can't we listen to him first before we pass?
Could. Well, if you have questions, it's just about the resolution.
We know, well, I did.
Honestly, I think if you're super vulnerable.
Yes, come on up.
I'm asking a lot of the questions that go in the presentation before you're taking action on a resolution. My presentation really doesn't, hardly even talks about the resolution towards the end. So can we do mine if you want to throw that up on the screen?
Click on the presentation.
I'm Steve Pumper on the PMA Financial, for those of you who have been before the board several times, but it's nice to be here again. So the, the first slide we're going to show you here documents what you just were discussing as far as projects. When I put this presentation together, I was just going off of the notes that Kevin had provided for, I think, the document you're looking at from the work session. Okay, so this is not intended for me to say that this is what you should be doing. But it sounds like basically your discussion, you're pretty close to that. So we're trying to figure out how to come up with three point three million dollars of funding to ident, to fund on the projects that are listed there on that page. And every one of those projects were just what you just, just talked about, okay? And that number does come to three million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand and fifty-nine dollars, so I just rounded it to three point three million, okay? So when you look at how would we fund that, as we discussed several different times from the board, you still have two point three, two million, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars remaining authority from when you went out to the voters for your school building bonds. So that's where the bulk of the funding is going to come from. I'm, just to make the numbers working, I'm putting in five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of capital facility bonds. I'm going to explain that in a little bit as we go forward because that number could be really flexible. We really think you're going to get more than two million, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from your remaining authority of school building bonds because of, of bidders right now who are bidding on bonds are, are giving you bond premium. So that means you are very, very likely to get in excess of that dollar amount that you can go to your project, although we can't control that until the day of the bid, until bids actually come in. So if the bids, if the bids are coming in and let's say you receive two point four million dollars to go to your construction, that means we would lower the amount of capital facility bonds then. Okay, so the, the less that you'd be borrowing against your capital going forward. The opposite would be true too, they could come in with a bid exactly at two million, three hundred and fifteen thousand. And then you have to take the cost of issuance out of that two million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, which would lower the amount that you have available for construction projects. And in that case, as we get to the resolution, we'd want authority from the board to sell up to six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, just so you could ultimately achieve that three point three million dollars. The last two items, it hasn't come up yet today at the board meeting, but you have four hundred and ten thousand dollars of available funding, three hundred thousands from the sale of the Brown and Hill properties and a hundred and ten thousands from money that you have reserved over time from your LTFM fund. So that's how we're coming up with that three point three million dollars of funding. Okay, we're good so far?
Mm-hmm.
You understand? All right, the capital facility bond, so thank you, Kevin, you did a nice job of explaining this. You received roughly two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. You receive roughly 238,000. That's the estimate for next year. That number's a dollar amount per pupil, so as you gain more pupils, you get more money. If you lose pupils, you get less money. Kevin did explain that, yes, you are levying that every year, so if you're just borrowing against this money and you're committing future funds for the next 10-year period of time or 15-year period of time, whatever you choose to do, you just know that you have to pay that, out of those, those funds that you'll get each time. The maximum length that you can do this is a 15-year period of time. We are showing you examples of doing over 10 years. One of the reasons is you don't wanna issue bonds that are gonna exceed the useful life of a project and I turn a field of the summer between that 10 and 12 years, so that's why we're kinda keeping at that 10-year period of time. Also, Kevin mentioned before that it, you know, your RIFs are kind of up for some work in about a 10-year period of time, so if you have these paid off in 10 years, it opens up the opportunity to help with your RIFs in 10 years. So, I think that's actually really good planning. And then the last piece is, yes, by however our funding system works, I don't even know if I meant it this way, but the levy that you right now are making for your capital comes into your general fund. When that gets turned over to a bond, it goes into Fund VII, which is your debt service fund, and anything in your debt service fund for geo-bonds qualifies for Ag to School credit. So, people, your Ag land will see a tax decrease on the portion of these bonds that would be sold under the capital facility bonds, okay? They also receive a, a text, they don't get a tax decrease, but they'll qualify for Ag to School credit on the remaining 2.3 million of authority on your, on your school building bonds as well. So, if we go to the next slide, we see again, 238,000 is your annual allocation. If we were to sell 615,000, which would be the max of capital facility bonds and we paid that out over 10-year period of time, it would be roughly 75,000 annually of principal interest payments, which represents 31% of your capital budget. If, if we were closer to the bottom end and only sold 400 or needed to sell 415,000 of capital facility bonds, it would be 55,000 a year or 23% of your capital facility budget, okay? And then here's the slide that shows the tax impact. So, on a 150,000 home, the reason I'm picking it is because that's the home that you illustrated when you went out to the voters. It would be a 19 dollar increase to issue the additional school building bond authority. As Kevin explained earlier, there's no additional tax increase for a resident, residential home with the capital facility bonds, 'cause you're already loving that. So, 19 dollars total annually. I mean, so that's, that's the total tax impact there. On a piece of Ag land, you know, you could pick the price per acre, 6,000 or 7,000. You'll see it's a, if I say in a 6,000 number, it's a 13 cent increase for the school building bonds. It's offset by a 6 cents reduction on the capital facility bond, so it's a net increase of 8 cents per acre by getting these projects done, okay? And then the last two slides I have here as far as tax impacts go, I shared with this, these with you last time I was here. Here is the tax impact when you went to the voters for your school building bonds. You estimated at that time it was gonna increase their taxes by 36 dollars. It actually increased it only by 15 dollars, so it was a 20 dollar lower increase than expected. So, if you add the 19 by going for this additional authority, you're almost at the exact same spot. You're still slightly lower. And if you look at the trend line, your taxes have actually gone down since you even went to the voters on, for residential. And then if you flip the one more slide, you see the tax impact on the Ag to School credit and it's even more drastic. I mean, your taxes went down rather than going up when you went for the school building bonds, but that's because this Ag to School credit came in and it's, it's accelerated over time, so.
When we had the election, the Ag to School tax credit rate was 40% and it has gone up to 70% over the last five years.
Right, it's at 70 right now.
So, that's why it's way below even what it's really taken.
So, I think, and I can't tell you, of course, what to do, but certainly you're within the realm of what you told the voters years ago, what the tax impacts would be and what they support. They came out and they voted yes, you know, so that's where you'd be at that way. If you were to go forward tonight with these projects I've, I've laid out and you've discussed, there is a resolution in your, in your packet that you would take action on then. It would authorize PMA Securities, the company I work for, to proceed with the bond sale, subject to certain parameters. It authorizes a publication in your newspaper that you're, you're planning on issuing capital facility bonds. That is a requirement. And it, it also allows you to participate in the state credit enhancement program, which you did your last time you sold your bonds. Again, a reminder what that is. It's free. You'd be foolish not to participate. The state guarantees to make the payments on your behalf, if, to the bond holders, if for some reason the Pipestone School District didn't make a payment. And that just lowers your interest rate, because it's great if you're, if you're buying, if you're a person trying to buy your bonds. It also allows for reimbursement of any project expenses, so this will take a few months for you to actually get dollars into your account. If there was any reason that you wanted to start any of these projects, you know, this summer, you could go ahead and pay your contractors and then reimburse them, reimburse yourself once the bonds close into your account. The parameters, which is the last slide I have for you, it gives authority to the superintendent and business manager, or sorry, or business manager and any school board officer to execute the documents as long as the power amount of the bonds in total does not exceed 2,930,000, and I broke it down how we expect that to look, and the true interest cost does not exceed 5%. Then, once those bonds are sold and those are executed, I come before the board again, for the entire board to ratify the sale of the bonds. The resolution also would expire as, at the end of this calendar year, should nothing happen. This bond sale does not happen before then. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Anybody have other questions for?
If we move industrial tech, then are we no longer contracting with Minnesota West out there?
No, still, we'll still do that.
I think the industrial arts, I mean, from the discussion, in my opinion, it's, it's fixed in Iran. Probably should've never been up there to begin with.
Right, I agree. So, then the 237 is that, that doesn't include the, the space where the computer labs used to be? So, it's actually gonna be more?
237 is to remove a wall and put another wall in and move equipment down and to put a doorway and a window between the two rooms. The computer lab can be a flex classroom for that whole area. We talked about Ag, teacher, industrial tech, but it would, they would move the business room into 1148 and that would be no cost, so it's just, 'cause it's already equipped to handle that type of thing.
So, we're talking about the space in the middle, right? Where we thought that.
That can be utilized in other ways too.
We haven't made any decision.
I think you're saying you'd like to see that utilized.
Right, I'm just clarifying that that is not.
That is not the price, no.
And these are all estimates. I mean, I think that Kraus Anderson gives you, I mean, when we worked with them through the whole project, they gave us cost estimates and they never went above them. I mean, usually it was a little bit lower.
Which, what I was gonna say, if the bids are favorable, that could maybe.
Be a spot where.
Be a spot where.
Or don't use your 238. I don't know. I guess I'm not in favor of using that, because I think you're gonna handicap yourself for the next 10 years with other issues. And expenses are going up on everything, so I guess I.
So, you're saying wait on that 238?
No, the, no, the, the.
Putting the.
Capital.
Capital.
Yeah, the capital, because you're gonna short yourself there. Right? You said it was 238.
No.
Well, that may be what we get. It depends on our student, how many students.
Right.
The 238 is what you receive annually.
Right.
So, you're using some of those dollars, I mean, let me just, sorry, let me just double check. You're using roughly 575,000 in total to get projects done. So, if you don't sell capital facility bonds, I mean, you gotta take your list and, and shorten it by 575,000. That's what you'd need to do. And I will just tell you again, I'm not advocating to your board, you decide what you wanna do. Capital facility bonds are used widely amongst school districts across the state. It might not be for a project that you're talking about, it could be for a RIF. And again, the reason you do that is you could either save for a 10-year period of time till you, you talk about, you have the money cash in bank, and now I can pay the RIF to do it right now, or you can decide, hey, I need to do a RIF right now, so I'm gonna leverage my future things, especially if borrowing interest rates are low, which they're fairly low right now. They're pretty much average where we have been over time, over the last 10-year period of time. And if construction costs are continually going up, so for instance, you're gonna borrow, we just sold bonds last week, 28 years was 4.25%. We sold 30-year bonds for 3.99%. And if construction costs are going up in double digit every single year, and I'll use a RIF as examples, 'cause it's so easy to, to imagine for anybody to see. If, you know, if a RIF costs you a million dollars this year to do and you wait 10 years till you build up enough money, well, a RIF's gonna cost a lot more than a million dollars if it's at 10% or more inflation. So, that's why you're trying to take advantage of, of the needs that you have right now for your students and the construction costs where they're at in today's dollars versus what it's costing me to borrow.
I guess my other question is if we did wait with one of these projects, then what may end up filling from the operating, this number anyway, at some point?
Well, that's the other thing, you know. I, I like, I like our fund balance where it's at, because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a healthy feeling, especially if you do, you know, if funding from the state were to be delayed or if anything were to happen, you know, we have enough cash on hand that we can operate. But, you know, the amount that we're talking with our fund balance where it's at, it's.
I would say just.
I don't know if you really feel it, if you.
I, I would say that having that allows you that if something does come up in the future in your capital needs, that you do have money to cover it.
I mean, our fund balance, we're at the, we're at the way top end of what. You know.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
It is, it's a great thing. You know, I mean, there's, there's been districts around us that don't have that and laying off staff.
Yeah, we don't wanna do none of that.
You know, so I mean, it's, it's kind of.
Daphne, I would dare say if you choose not to do, you probably won't do it unless.
And that's where, that's where my feeling.
I mean, none of this would've been done if it wouldn't have been for this bond authority that was given back to you, otherwise none of, I mean, we looked at this stuff and didn't do any of it, because we didn't have, but now you've got the funds, so now you're, and then you're just at that point where, you know, another half a million, what do you do, you know, and.
Be nice to stick with exactly what you got, but it never always worked that way.
Well.
What we got.
These are worthwhile projects. I think there's some things that you.
That's the hard part.
Lord, you weed it out with some things, I think that, yeah, they are a little hard to maybe see and can we do it a little bit more economically than what they did? But, but, I mean, all these academic programs are, I, I think you're just, you need another half million and capital bond project is, is available to you? Some schools burn the whole thing, you know, a lot of it, I mean.
Well, we, yeah, personally, and actually, I think, I'm not sure Brad, if you might've ever mentioned, we never recommend a district to go for the 50% of their funds. You can borrow against your capital bond, so you're long-term facility maintenance bonds. And it's just really hard for a district to operate if they're burning more than 50%. I, we don't think that's very prudent. But, but in your levels, you know, 30% or 20-some percent, that's definitely a, a number that, that a lot of districts feel comfortable with.
I'm just gonna bring up, I know that we talked about it in the budget meeting. The senior class that's going in there now is the, an all-time high of like 104. They graduate, you're probably gonna drop that by 30, average class size.
20.
You know, that's.
Yeah, makes a difference.
That makes a huge difference too.
And how much is coming in?
Yeah, unless we get a really big kindergarten class, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So.
Well, where are we at? It's time to. Time to make a decision.
I don't know where you could. The RIF will impact the most students. The facts, those classes are hard to even get into, 'cause so many kids.
It's so widely used.
Yeah. The Ag, you have two teachers coming in and it's building the program. And the industrial technology, that's a must, but I don't.
'Cause, 'cause this relocation of the long jump and high jump areas, why, why, I mean, what is the deal with that? Why can't they be where they're at?
They could be, it's just with the mass amount of dirtwork that's gonna be done to redo that whole area. They gotta, they gotta put it back together after they tear it all apart.
So, that's whether we move it or not?
Well, the old ones would still be where they're at. They just wanna move them so they're, so they're within the complex like most other schools.
They're already doing the dirtwork.
They're already doing the dirtwork, so they.
Costs extra.
Yeah, the 340,000 isn't just for the long jump and.
Oh, okay.
I was thinking the same thing and I reread it again.
No, so I was. Since they're doing it all, Katie, they wanna get it.
Gotcha. I thought that was just for that, and now that you say that, yeah, it is, and.
Yeah.
Well, the site work will be done either way, so.
Right.
If you don't put them there, the price won't be any, nothing significant enough.
I was thinking the same thing, Katie, and then I reread it and, yeah.
So, what do we think? We know we wanna do something, right?
Right, yeah.
Well, you gotta do the, the main one in order to get the money from the state, so you gotta spend 2.3, for sure.
We're, we're gonna go, we're gonna go over regardless. It's just how we're gonna.
Well, unless you'd cut out one of the, a major one, but then you wouldn't spend the 2.3, so then you're gonna lose a bunch of funding from the state, and that's.
But, I mean, we, you know, we had staff come, we had staff present. They were, every one of them was passionate about their project. Every one of them's gonna impact their area.
Yeah.
They're good, they're good projects. We have the money, we have the capability to borrow. I mean, we could use fund balance, we could borrow. I mean, we're way under, you know, we got plenty of room for, to go either direction. I think, I think we just need a motion to move forward with the projects we've identified, that's.
I'll make a motion to do three, four, five, and six.
And taking the money from where? And getting the money.
We'll either borrow the money or take it from the fund. Whatever's the best way to do it, can we do it that way?
When you say take it from the fund?
Is it the fund for the balance?
Yeah, you, you could, you could just sell the remaining authority and then use your fund balance to pay for any project. I mean, you can, you can use your fund balance for anything you want.
Fund balance is what?
General fund.
Your general fund, fund balance. Yeah, I mean, you don't have to sell capital facility.
I, I don't think we need to. I think we can.
I think we wanna do that.
I think we can finance.
I was saying, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think.
I'm not in favor of that.
No, me neither. I'm not in favor of that.
Capital facility bond for the remaining.
Whatever we think we need to do. Do we gotta decide how we can borrow the money? We can sit here and argue for hours on that.
I mean, do we just need a motion to like save users of projects that we're doing and we?
Well, we, we gotta have a path to finance it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's me, you gotta have a, where it's coming from.
Okay, I'll redo my motion. Three, four, five, and six, and do the, borrow the money from the capital.
Do a capital facility bond.
Facility bond.
From capital outlay.
I'll say this.
I have a motion in a second to do which numbers, Lance?
Three, four, five, and six.
With the financing coming from the.
Capital.
Above and beyond what we need.
Capital.
Above and beyond.
We're using the capital.
Fresh on that, so capital facility bonds.
That's the one that comes out of your capital outlay.
The 250.
Pay over year, the 250.
Take 50,000 a year out of that.
Yep, and that, and that's out of our budget then.
Yep, out of the capital outlay.
Hopefully it's not that much.
Yep, and hopefully it's not that much.
I think Steve, the resolution.
We'll do that after this, if it's whatever happens.
Yeah, that's what.
The resolution has a.
Yeah, there's no majority vote, yeah.
Motion fails.
Okay.
We moving on?
Well, we just should've undertaken a different motion.
Yeah. Yeah.
I guess the reason I didn't wasn't in favor, but is I just don't think it's right to use that money that's gonna be spent on other things and you're handicapping yourself for the next 10 years on that. That's the only part I didn't like, but I'm not sure what to do to, to fix that project.
I would agree with, I would agree with you if it were identified.
If it were identified?
If the funds were identified for projects today, but they're not.
We spend that...
But we do, but I, in my mind, in my mind, we have a brand-new facility over here, we got rid of two old facilities where that, where that money would be spent to help fix and do those types of projects.
But, yeah, I just, I just feel you're cutting yourself for the next 10 years on just normal stuff that the facility needs.
Right, or if something happens, or...
That, that's just my opinion, I, I guess I'm...
Well, that's my opinion, I just, yeah.
But I don't, I don't...
You wanna eliminate something, though?
Not really.
Okay, then, do you wanna take it out of the fund balance?
No, no.
Not really.
Then do you want lease levy? Then we use egg to school.
Can you do, can you do lease levy?
You could, at least levy does not qualify for ag to school credit, it would have tax impact.
That's why the other way.
But you could, you...
But that's what you're talking about when you say that we'd still be under the thing, right?
The only thing really you could use is lease levy authority on the, well, I take it back, you could use it on the fields, on the turf field, you could use it, so yes, you could, you could do it. But again, it, it would have tax impact and just not...
So what kind of tax impact are you looking at? Under what we originally talked because of the ag to school tax credit?
Well, no, it's gonna be more than a 2, right now you'd be $2 less, right? With what I showed you today, than what you originally told your voters?
Yes.
For the, for residential home, it would have more than a $2 impact for the additional homes.
But we went, originally you were at 40 percent ag to school tax credit, and now you're at 70.
No, that doesn't apply to residential homes, it only applies to ag.
But your other stuff is lower because of that ag to school tax credit, that if you went with not ag to school credit, would you still be under the original amount?
For ag land, you would be...
When we went to the voters, we could only tell them what the tax impact would be.
Right.
And that was a 40 percent ag.
Right.
And the voters approved the, the, the tax increase to do the elementary project.
Yep.
And was, and we came in under that, but at the time, that was where it was at, so...
But on this, it says that the tax impact was supposed to be 36, is what they voted for, but it was only an actual $15 increase.
Right.
So if we did that, would we be over the 36, is what you're asking, right?
Exactly, yes. I think you have to do lease levy.
That's what I said, because remember, you're selling additional authority, which adds $19, right? Do you see that in my chart?
The 2.3.
The additional 2.3 million dollars adds $19 back, so which leaves you $2 less than what you originally told the voters.
Okay.
Because you're adding 19 back into it, so now if you do the additional $575,000 of lease levy authority, that would add more than the additional $2 tax impact, plus it would add to your ag land, too, it really didn't get you back, your ag land still would be underneath. But you also aren't taking advantage, of course, of 50 percent of the project that qualifies coming from other places than Pipestone. If you do lease levy, 100 percent of it's coming from your tax occurs.
Yeah, I don't like that either.
We have these conversations with many school districts on many different things, and bottom line is, it really is, is if you want to get the projects funded, you know, this is the method to go forward in doing it. If you don't, if you don't feel comfortable with the financing method, your option is to reduce the projects, the number of projects, that's really it, that's what the options are. Which is a, your choice, which is fine, I mean, boards make those choices all the time.
So I just want, I just want to make sure I understand. So let's say I'm just picking one, just a random one, the industrial tech, let's say you completely cut that out, in three years, we decide we have to do that, and we don't have the funds for it, where does it come from?
Capital bond.
Yeah, either, the same things we...
Out of that, out of that money.
Isn't that what we're talking about right now, though? So we either do it now and start now, or we starting...
Or we'll do it down the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's where the daycare would come out of, too.
It's just more knowing, two years down the road, you're gonna know where you're at, two years down the road. I mean, there's always that unknown of where are we gonna be at in two years, and I get that, I mean, I get that that's always gonna be a concern, but two years down the road, you could then decide, do we have money? You know, I mean, that's my only, because like Chrissy said, you're gonna lose X amount of students.
Hopefully you get 'em back somewhere.
Hopefully you get 'em back.
Like kindergarten or...
Gotta have more kids.
You want, you want, you wanna get that.
No, I'm not.
We're due to staff me.
So, so my, my, my rethoughts on this thing is, you know, I didn't really wanna pull it out of the, out of the, your, your...
Capital facility.
Capital facility, thank you for that. But you could, if you needed other, you have a fund balance that you could use for some of that, too.
Yes.
If you thought you were shorting yourself down the road.
Just, maybe, another, you're worried about enrollment decline?
Mm-hmm.
The, the amount of capital is about $215 per pupil, so if you lose 20 students, you're talking about $4,000 less in your cap, I mean, this is, I should've probably said that...
No, it's good discussion, no, I mean, $215 per pupil. And I'm kinda changing my two a little bit.
Capital outlay.
Just 'cause you have that money in, two, two spots that you really could pull that from.
Really?
I, I mean, if you short yourself down the road, that's what was my hang-up on it, but you really have a fund balance that you could absorb some of that.
You're in a really good financial position.
Yeah, but you wanna keep it that way, I don't...
Right.
Yeah.
So would the older the school buildings get, we get more LTFM money.
Yep.
Well, and that's true, too, that's good to remember.
We're the lowest for that right now because of the new buildings.
That helps for roof repairs or things down the road that you need to do, too.
Then we'll get more LTFM money.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It's constantly gonna go on.
And again, the capital outlay, you know, we, we have, we go through that every year and determine how we're gonna spend that. If you have 50,000 or 60,000 less, you know, you still will work within that budget, it's, like Steve said, it's not that, that ridiculous, plus you do have a fund balance, so if something came up that was like...
So that, that, back to the tennis courts there on another three years, and then you'd have some of that?
Well, that's LTFM.
But it would, you...
That's a lease levy, so that's just a tax relief that's coming down the road.
Yeah, okay, so you really aren't getting that money back.
We're not getting any more money, that, we're, we're just leased, we're just levying money against lease levy, and, and the taxpayers are paying that.
Right.
When that comes up, you're gonna see taxes go down.
Which would be good to see, too.
We, we won't have the revenue, but we're also paid off for tennis courts, so...
Right.
Well, and I guess, when you think about it, when you look at it from the budgetary, like, it's supposed to be no different than every year is budgeting X amount of dollars to each program. I mean, you're talking about 1, 2, 3, 4 program, four different programs, so if you break that down per year, I mean, in your budget.
Say your motion again.
Make a motion to approve 3, 4, 5, 6, and then whatever the end of it was.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second. All those in, or should we do a roll call again?
No. Any other discussions?
Is there any other discussion on that?
This is the same motion.
Same motion.
Okay.
I didn't think you could do a, the same motion that was already voted down, can you?
Yeah, you, I think you can.
You just did another motion?
I just did another motion.
Okay.
There.
I didn't think you could do the same, but...
Yes, yes.
Motion to reconsider.
There you go.
Yes.
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 I think they're all...
Did everybody vote?
Yep.
Did you get it now?
She's looking at the rules.
Yep.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, I need to reconsider, I'm trying to...
Yeah, I think so, yep.
So you have resolutions here, Steve?
Just one, just a single resolution. And again, if you, the, the screen up there, actually, if you go back one, Kevin, it just tells you what the resolution is doing, rather than reading the entire resolution, but again, so, there you go, you're authorized now to proceed with, with both the remaining authority on school building bonds and the capital facility bonds, you're authorizing to publish the notice in your paper, you're authorizing to apply for the state credit enhancement program, and reimburse yourselves for any expenses, and then the next page is probably the more important part, is you are giving authority to the superintendent or business manager and a school board officer to sign the documents if the maximum power amount does not exceed the 2,930,000, again, we're kinda putting into chunks of the 2,315, and we can't exceed that at all for the school building bonds, and not to exceed 615,000 capital facility bonds, again, it might be lower, we're hoping it'll be lower, and it'll sign the true interest cost does not exceed 5 percent.
So the resolution is not locking the district into this number, because we have to see if we get premium and all of that.
Correct, we just can't exceed that number.
We cannot exceed that.
Cannot exceed that number. Our goal is to get you $2,930,000 of project proceeds, that's what we're trying to get you.
Yeah.
So we need, we need a motion to, to this resolution?
We need a motion to...
Yes.
To approve the resolution as presented by PMA.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as presented by PMA. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes.
Hey, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I brought you up earlier.
All right. 11.1, resolution approving gifts to the school. I'd like to thank Christ the King Lutheran Church for the $100 donation to the wellness room, and Ken and Belvissence for the donation of two drum bones, one clarinet, and a meliphone to the Pipestone Area School Band. Can I get a motion approving these gifts to the school?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the gifts to the school. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes.
11.2, resolution approving gifts to the high school activities. I'd like to thank First Bank and Trust for the $300 donation to the French Club. Can I get a motion to approve the gifts to the high school activities?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the gifts to the school. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.3, surplus technology items.
Mr. Stuca, we have a number of computers and things that are surplus and we're not gonna use anymore. He's got a connection with a recycling company, and we actually get some credit back for the stuff we, and then dispose them properly, and say, if we were to get rid of it ourselves, we'd probably have to pay a lot of money, so this works out pretty good, so recommend approving these surplus.
Can I get a motion to, for the surplus technology items?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes.
Hey, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I brought you up earlier.
All right. 11.1, resolution approving gifts to the school. I'd like to thank Christ the King Lutheran Church for the $100 donation to the wellness room, and Ken and Belvissence for the donation of two drum bones, one clarinet, and a meliphone to the Pipestone Area School Band. Can I get a motion approving these gifts to the school?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the gifts to the school. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.2, resolution approving gifts to the high school activities. I'd like to thank First Bank and Trust for the $300 donation to the French Club. Can I get a motion to approve the gifts to the high school activities?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the gifts to the high school activities. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.3, surplus technology items.
Mr. Stuca, we have a number of computers and things that are surplus and we're not gonna use anymore. He's got a connection with a recycling company, and we actually get some credit back for the stuff we, and then dispose them properly, and say, if we were to get rid of it ourselves, we'd probably have to pay a lot of money, so this works out pretty good, so recommend approving these surplus.
Can I get a motion to, for the surplus technology items?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.4, declare equipment items obsolete.
We got some items that we're upgrading, and I've just directed that I don't like being a storage place for equipment. We do post these for about 30 days, and if anybody is interested in the items, we ask them to make a reasonable offer, and, and then if they want them, we give them, otherwise we're, we dispose of them, so I hope that somebody wants some, some good things in there.
Can I get a motion to approve declaring the equipment items obsolete?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.5, resolution establishing dates of filing affidavits of candidacy.
Got a special election for a school board position, so we have to go through and do our resolutions for the election.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the resolution establishing dates of filing affidavits of candidacy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.6, resolution calling special election to fill school board vacancy.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.7, education, identity, and access management board resolution.
This is your superintendent that is the EDIM for the district and approves all of the MDE web access. This would be for Dr. Willard, starting on July 1, so recommend, you do this annually, so just a different name this year.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. Letter of resignation from Corey Strasser, middle school, high school principal.
I'd like to thank Mr. Strasser, Dr. Strasser, for his 13 years and his wife Jamie. She's also taught here and is also moving on. He's accepted the assistant superintendent position in Rapid City, South Dakota, so they are moving and busy. So I've been in contact with Dr. Strasser, think he's wrapping up all of his duties here and is in order, so. Congratulations and best wishes to the Strassers.
Yeah, I really thank Corey, he did a lot of good for our school. Get a motion to approve the letter of resignation?
So moved.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. Approved transportation contract with Ludoff Bus Incorporated.
Negotiations committee met with Mr. Ludoff and went through the terms of the contract. They agreed to a 5% and 3% increases over next year and the year after. And then also added another two years onto the contract for '25, '26, and '26, '27. Those rates are negotiated again in two years. This is what we call a two and two contract, which is what we normally do. If you do recall, the first year I was here and with all the transportation changes, they did a two and three. And then the last time you did a two and one, so now we're back to the two and two. But negotiations committee worked this out, had a few conferences and we came to the numbers, went pretty well.
I move we approve the transportation contract with Ludoff Bus Incorporated.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the transportation contract with Ludoff Bus Incorporated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.10, approved commercial insurance renewal for 2023, 2024.
Each year we have our insurance, insurance is going up 5.3%. I met with John and Randy Clausen and they took us through what all this, a lot of this is national insurance stuff and just there's a lot of things that are going on and it affects everybody, but 5.3% increase, our deductible went up a little bit. Hey, I think they worked to get the best rates for us. Daphne did work on it.
Gotcha.
May I also approve the commercial insurance renewal, 2023, '24?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the commercial insurance renewal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.11, approved garbage and recycling proposal for 2023, 2024.
We'd got two proposals and they were really close, very close, but the city's proposal is just under Van Dyke's proposal.
I know, I move that we take the city's bid as they've, it's actually under the other bid and they've always done a good job for us in the past. And it's nice to keep it in town.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the garbage and recycling proposal for '23, '24 using the city of Pipestone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.12, approve membership to MSBA for '23, '24.
Each year we annually renew our membership with the Minnesota School Board Association. They provide policy service, board questions, procedural questions, so recommend you renew that. With MSBA, they're a valuable partner and lobby in the legislature for us.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the membership to MSBA for '23, '24. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.13, approve membership to MREA for '23, '24.
Again, Minnesota Rural Education Association is a very strong advocate for rural schools. They were influential and real key in getting Aggie School Tax Credit passed. They do a really good job advocating for us and other rural schools. Think that their, their, things they do for us are definitely worth it. Recommend you renew.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the membership to MREA for '23, '24. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.14, approve 2023, 2024 literacy plan.
We have to do this annually in the settlements.
You did not make a ton of changes as we're not through our letters training yet in order to make all of those changes. You noticed on the literacy plan, the data is updated as it is each year. And you will notice at the very end, it talks about professional development and how we will continue our letters training as well as our grade level check-ins throughout each unit of letters training. We will use the class data as well to progress monitor our meaningful letters, influential letters.
Get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the 2023, '24 literacy, literacy plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.15, approve fiscal year '24 budget.
Budget Finance Committee met with myself and business manager Kennedy. She's been working diligently for.
Chuck Jackie.
Nice job, Jackie, getting this all ready.
I don't know how much, do you just want me to do a quick summary or what would you like?
Quick summary, general fund.
General fund, I'm projecting a deficit of $476,648, which, that's conservative, I'm not too concerned.
And the year before, you projected?
Like 1.3 million loss. And when I went back and revised, it looks like maybe it'll be a $600,000 loss.
We will have a deficit this year, but I think with next year, with all of the funding that the state is giving us, it's, it's really, should be softer. As I've mentioned before, Jackie estimates revenues conservatively, so usually a little bit lower. Expenses usually a little bit more aggressively, so that's a good combination usually. So when it comes out to about half million, that's usually a pretty good sign. But we don't know about special ed and we don't know about our contract settlements and where they're going to be, so.
We received more money in special ed, they increased our special ed cross subsidy by quite a bit. However, special ed, like when I'm presenting this budget right now in June right now, we will not have the actuals as far as the general ed revenue and the special ed revenue for 18 months. When we sit down and actually present, we figure out the receivables for the current year. That's what Matt Talbert always says, that these are still receivables, they're pretty close. But that's the way the state of Minnesota does things.
Yeah.
Not many other places.
And if you, if you look at the sheets I gave you, you guys have them on your computer, basically it's a cover sheet and then I'm comparing the revenues from last year to this year line by line and the expenditures. So if you get a chance to look at this, if you have any questions as far as where I come up with the numbers or, I've got a couple binders over there, I can go through them with you.
Throw in your binders.
That's, and actually I went back and looked and I, the operating capital that he said we have for '24, he had $238,837, I have $239,118 in my budget, so hey, we're pretty close.
Steve is a little conservative.
Yeah.
Any questions for Jackie?
It's a general fund, then we have food service, we have a number of different funds. The general fund is the heftiest, that's where the significant portion of our funding is.
Then we have the food service fund, which we have, our fund balance is too high and they'll send me a letter again and we keep trying to spend it. They did increase it to three months, to six months expenditures you could have now instead of three, but I was still over. But I went to a training today in Marshall and there are a lot of schools in the same situation we're in and they sent us a letter and then we tell them we're going to spend the money. We just don't know how long we're going to be able to keep doing that, but that's okay. There's really nothing. When you hire a food service company, they can only, they increase those by 8.8%. That's all they're allowed to increase their fixed meal price, Tahr, because that's set by law. In my budget, I use 7.7%, because that's what it had been the prior year, so I may make a little less money this year.
Food service is in the black.
Big time black, yeah.
Schedule, let me stay there.
Next one is your community ed fund balance. And if you look at the first sheet, it just breaks down the overall community ed revenue and expenditures. And then preschool and ECFE also falls within the community ed umbrella.
You'll also notice in the community education fund, there's no longer the public library finances that were operating there, so that's why that decreased by about $160,000. So we won't, we don't do that anymore.
And our preschool fund, we were usually running a negative balance, but since we did receive voluntary pre-K funding for this year, we're actually going to be in the black for next year. And there's probably a good chance we're getting voluntary pre-K funding for this year also, but we don't know that yet, so therefore it is not in the budget. Next one.
Jackie went to a meeting today and heard something different than everyone else has heard, so.
The Department of Education is still trying to interpret the legislative session. So they come up with things and then the Department of Ed has to try to make it real.
They said that we'll probably get voluntary pre-K next year.
That's what I heard today. Kevin heard something different, what, a week ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. So we just don't know for sure. Yep, I'm trying to be polite. How do you like that? The next one is the building construction fund, which this is what, this is, I had to get something out there as far as the bond proceeds, the issuance costs, and then we just said, well, we may spend half of that money this year, because you have to have a budget approved before you can spend any money. At the time we did this, we didn't know what we were doing. So it's there. All of this will probably be amended in January when I have better information. Next one is your debt service fund. That one's pretty much, you know, that's our debt and our payments. That's pretty much, that's the easy one. The next one is the high school activity, which I don't think I've ever had in there before, but since that's under board control. And then I just have the sheets attached showing what organizations run through our high school activity accounts. If anyone's interested in any more detail, just come and see me and I'm about to explain it.
Once approved, Jackie submits tomorrow to MDE and we are in compliance.
Any questions for Jackie?
If you pass it. If we pass it.
I'll prove it, I'll prove whatever. If you don't approve it, we can't spend any money, we save a lot of money.
Can I get a motion to approve the fiscal year '24 budget?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.16, approve '23, '24 food service management contract with Tahr.
I believe we're, we have a four-year thing, but we renew each year. I think this is the second year of the renewal or?
This is the third year.
Third year of the renewal.
Third year of an option to renew the fourth, I believe.
Is that what? So in a year or two, you will have to do a food service bid again. They didn't do that over COVID, but so now we're back in it again, so recommend approval.
And when I was talking, if you look on page two of that contract, it says percent increase maximum 8.8%. That's the highest law allows them to increase it. So when people say, well, you know, maybe pay them more, you can't. They can, they can only increase it by what the law states.
Okay.
That's what I was referring to.
Can I get a motion to approve the '23, '24 food service management contract with Tahr?
I just have a question for Jackie about this, but, okay, so like you can use it for equipment, but you can't necessarily use it to put in like a, like give students free breakfast or something. I mean, you can't, could you do something like that?
Well, no.
It's all going to be free next year.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just asking, can you give it to, can you put it towards that type of student services or it has to be like equipment?
Like using our fund balance?
No, you, yeah, to, where we're high and we need to find places to use it, can you use it for like student services, like?
So like, so like at the meals, wouldn't it have been free?
They're not all free, are they? It's just breakfast and lunch. So if you did a second chance breakfast or something and you offered that or what, that's what I'm just?
I would have to find that out, I'm thinking, no, but.
Okay.
We can use it to pay student debt?
No, if there's any.
Can you use it in the next term? That's a good one, Debbie.
You can't even, you can't even use it to purchase cafeteria.
Because maybe they would want.
You can't use it to purchase cafeteria tables. You can't use the food service fund.
So you can only use it for ovens and freezers?
Dishwashers. And then I can actually run sort of like our overall salary through there, but that only amounts to like $8,000 and they have a specific formula you have to use it, so I can run another $8,000 through there. If anyone doesn't pay their bill, I can't even run the bad debt through food service fund, that has to be run through general fund.
Can you pay board members with it?
Sure.
Okay.
Like I said, when I was at, when I was at Marshall, a lot of schools are having the same issue, not just us.
I approve that we approve the '23, '24 food contract management with Tahr.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.17, approve Paulson lease, field lease agreement with the city of Pipestone.
The city has agreed, approved all three of these agreements that we have, the negotiations committee met. This first one is our softball fields and having an agreement with the city. And there's some interesting things in there. Number one, the city built the softball fields with, through a grant. And there was an original lease with the city so that they could do that. So in our agreement, we really have recognized that the city built those fields and then when, when we use them, we maintain them, and when they use them, they maintain them. We also added the ball fields, the little league fields that are on the elementary, so they can use them and also our baseball field out here, so.
And the soccer field.
Well, that's the city's, but that's, this is our, this is our property that we're leasing to, we're having a recognized lease with the city. So we, we had one way back, but it was, things have changed significantly. When they did that, there was no girls softball, the city needed those fields, we really didn't, so that's why they built them. And so the whole thing acknowledges that and keeps it all on the up and up. So everybody understands how everybody works, that was the intent, right?
Right.
Was, how, how was it operating? Let's get it written down. So that was the intent and the city approved it last Monday, last Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yeah, so recommend, it's recommended for your approval now.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Paulson Field lease agreement with the city of Pipestone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.18, approve joint powers agreement with the city of Pipestone.
This has to do with community education and like the rec program and community ed and those types of things. Chrissy asked a question last year about why are we paying the city money and letting them use our facilities? Because that's in community education, that's how it's supposed to work, so that is also in here. Talks about how the summer rec can schedule and how community ed schedules and how we try to get everybody working together so they can utilize our facilities. So again, city passed this last Tuesday, recommend you approve it also.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the joint powers agreement with the city of Pipestone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. 11.19, approve baseball soccer field lease with city of Pipestone.
We've had a lease agreement with the city for the A's field and the other field, the two baseball fields that are their property. And they also added the soccer fields area, so that if the school ever wanted to use them or we could do that, we have an agreement to utilize those spaces as wherever they're at. So that was updated, city passed that last Tuesday also. Recommend school board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the baseball soccer field lease with the city of Pipestone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. I have one more thing that I want to bring in front of the board. We never, we never did identify a vice chair for a time that, yeah, to replace Randy in that position for a time, you know. I do travel for work and so there are going to be times that I might not be here. I suggest Lance, with his prior experience being the board chair. But you guys can, if you have someone else in mind, but we should, we should, we should vote on putting somebody in that position.
Nominate Lance? I don't know. You?
I can.
I nominate Lance.
Second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of nominating Lance for the vice chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. One more thing before we adjourn. I got a, I got a, I got a list of Kevin's achievements, since he's been at the Pipestone School this week.
Found some numbers.
He developed the district facility and curriculum roadmap. Facility study, community task force, tennis courts were installed after not having a home tennis match for over five years. He was instrumental in passing the building bond with over 70% approval. Developed a plan to navigate the district through pandemic and prioritize in-person learning that resulted in the elementary students being in the classroom 100% of the time. Invested in staff development by implementing proven. the time. Invested in staff development by implementing proven evidence-based practices such as instruction, instructional coaching and letters training. Guided board through staff negotiations resulting, resulting in historic wage increases for paraprofessionals and custodians. Guided board through strategic planning process resulting in a five-year strategic plan, excuse me. Received national certification for superintendent, served on several South SWWC cooperative advisory committees. Moved for, moved to food service since we just discussed it, to Tahoe. This move caused our food service budget to go from a negative balance to a positive. Those are just a few that, that I was aware of. So I just wanted to recognize. Thank you. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. We're adjourned.